All right, we'll bring this meeting to order. We're going to switch it up a little bit this evening. We've got the Boy Scouts, Trip Three, and John Fernal. They're going to actually come up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I agree.
Yeah, come on, one on. Appreciate y'all being here.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, thank you all. Okay, first thing on the agenda is a reading approvals of minutes from the August 29th, 2024 workshop. This workshop had a pretty lengthy agenda. Some of the items included on it were Raleigh County Commission aging, the day center, and pain handling ordinance. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Second. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no. So moved, the minutes are approved, thank you council. Next item on the agenda is the reading approval of minutes from the September 4th, 2024 special council meeting. This is regarding the appointment of Ann Worley as the interim city manager. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, all those in favor. Anyone opposed say no? Okay, great. So moved, thank you council. Moving on, the reading and approval of minutes from the September 10th, 2024 regular council meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? So moved. Second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no? So moved, thank you council. Last one, reading approval of minutes from the September 14th, special council meeting. This was all regarding the city manager position. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? So moved. Second. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no? So moved, okay, great, thank you council. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Kevin Price to the Beckley Fire Department Civil Service Commission. May I have a motion to appoint Kevin Price to the Beckley Fire Department Civil Service Commission?
So moved.
Is there any questions or comments on this matter?
How long is the term for?
I believe it's four years.
Any other questions? Okay, great, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no? All right, great, so moved. Thank you council. All right, next up is the approval of the bid for the DLAB grant for groups two, three, and four. So if you remember a couple city council meetings ago, we got the bids in, opened them here. Took forever. I don't know if y'all were here, remember that, but... So we did award the bids. For DLAB demolition group two, I'm going to call on Councilman Reed to just kind of expand a little bit more on that.
Yeah, so that covered 110 Grant Street, 216 Mills Avenue, 367 Mule Avenue, 201 Hartley Avenue, 301 West Moreland Street, and Empire Salvage was the lowest at 32,000. And with it being a WVDEP, they require that we take the lowest bidder, and that was the lowest bid on group two.
Empire Salvage.
Empire Salvage and Recycling at 32,000.
Okay, so with that, may I have a motion to approve Empire Salvage in the amount of 32,000 for the demo of structures listed in group two? So moved.
Second.
Anyone else have any further questions or comments about?
Six structures.
Yes, five.
Five structures. Okay, great. All those in favor of approval say aye. Anyone opposed say no? Okay, so that is approved. Moving on to the second one, this is DLAB demolition group three. Do you want to comment on that a little bit more?
Yeah, I mean, I can go over it. It was two properties, 104 Hunter Street and 107 Elko Lane. And the lowest bid on this one was Empire Salvage and Recycling at $8,000, so I'll make that in the form of a motion to accept that bid.
Yeah, motion to approve Empire Salvage?
So moved.
Second.
He made the motion.
Okay. All in favor. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no? Okay, great, thank you council. And then the last one was DLAB demolition group four, if you want to comment on those properties.
Yeah, and it was also two properties, 313 Maplewood Lane, 938 South Fayette Street. And the lowest bid we had on that one was Tom's Tear Down and Takeaway at $13,000. So Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept that bid.
Second.
I'm second.
All those approve, say aye. Anyone opposed say no? Okay, great, it is approved, Tom's Tear Down and Takeaway, I still like that name. All right, moving on to next. Next item on the agenda is the second reading and public hearing of ordinance authorizing progress sewer easement. I'll turn this over to Mr. File for more explanation.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, tonight is the second reading of this ordinance. We did first reading on September 10th. This is an ordinance that was requested by the Beckley Sanitary Board. It's an easement basically that will be used for the purpose of installing, laying, maintaining, repairing, removing, and replacing, and operating a storm and/or sanitary sewer system and related appliances. And that includes a stormwater management pound also. And this is property that's located, there's a legal description, but it's property located between South Eisenhower Drive and Clarence W. Metis Boulevard. Attached to the ordinance is a plaque that shows where it's located, and there is a meets and bounds description also. And what I will do tonight is I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone has any comments either in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance. First, I'm going to read it by title. It's an ordinance authorizing city of Beckley to grant and convey to Beckley Sanitary Board an easement and right-of-way over, across, and through certain real property of city of Beckley between South Eisenhower Drive and Clarence W. Metis Memorial Boulevard. And the public hearing is now open. If anybody has any questions, we also have with us tonight Jeremiah Johnson, who's the general manager of the Beckley Sanitary Board, in the event there are any questions that need to be answered. Does anybody have any questions or any comments either in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance? Appearing to be none, I will close the public hearing and turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. File. So may I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented? So moved. Second. Any further questions or comments about anybody on city council? Okay, great, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no? Okay, great, so moved. Thank you, council. Next up is the second reading of public hearing of ordinance authorizing city of Beckley to convey 131.47 acres of real estate, more or less, located in the Pinecrest Industrial Park in Beckley, Raleigh County, West Virginia, to the Raleigh County Commission for the purpose of economic development of this real estate. So again, I will turn it over to Mr. File again.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this ordinance also was passed on first reading on September the 10th. Tonight is the second reading. I'm going to open a public hearing in just a minute, and anybody here who has comments either in favor of or in opposition to will be given an opportunity to speak. And we ask that if you do speak, you limit your comments as much as possible. The maximum anyone can speak would be three minutes, but we certainly would ask if there are any comments, they'd be less than that if possible. I'll read this ordinance by title. This is an ordinance that authorizes city of Beckley to convey 131.47 acres of real estate, more or less, located in the Pinecrest Industrial Park in Beckley, Raleigh County, West Virginia, to the Raleigh County Commission for the purpose of economic development of this real estate. And at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone who has any comments either in favor of or in opposition. Yes?
Danielle.
Greetings, my name is Danielle Stewart, and I'm here with the intent of debunking the threats this council has received from numerous parties about this property. In front of you are copies of documents I will be referencing. The first is about Pinecrest Development Corporation suing the city. The Pinecrest Development Corporation does not have legal standing to sue the city for the return of the property. In reference to the deed from the PDC to the city, tab A, it does not state that if the city fails to develop the property, that the PDC may re-enter the property. Compare that to the deed from the West Virginia Economic Development Authority to the PCD, tab B, which states the West Virginia Economic Development Authority can re-enter the property if it's not used for economic development. The same statement is made on the deed from the Department of Agriculture to the Department of Economic Development Authority at tab C. Only those two entities have standing to challenge the ownership of the property, not Pinecrest Development Corporation. Further, the Pinecrest Development Corporation failed to file their annual report to maintain their business license with the Secretary of State. You'll see that at tab D. Lastly, even if they wanted to, where would the PDC get the money for a lawyer? Remember, the city paid $300,000 in debt owned by the PDC for this property. So once again, nothing but an empty debt threat designed to coerce you into making a decision others want you to make. Next, let's talk about the county commissioner, ARPA funds. Before you is the list of projects the commission has undertaken with ARPA funds, and that's at tab E. For economic development, first to highlight is the commission used ARPA funds for economic development at the Raleigh County Airport, a property not owned by the county. Further, the county gave ARPA money to Piney Creek Watershed Association to clean septic tanks of private residents on private property. The county owns none of it. So why does the county need to own the Beckley Technological Park to invest ARPA funds in economic development? The answer is, they don't. One other thing to point out, in tab F, of the four projects, only one has actually started. So why the rush to transfer the property now, now, now? You know that answer. Hurry up before the truth comes out, just like the $28,000 pay raise to the city judge none of you knew about until after you approved the now, now, now city budget during your first session. Some people think this economic development stuff is too hard for the city. They want to wash their hands of the hard stuff. When does Beckley lead again? When does the city do what's in the best interest of the city before others? When do we become the city of champions again? Because we got a whole lot of champions out here. Let me tell you, it doesn't start with transferring this property to the county. It starts with standing up to those with agendas that harm our city and telling them, we're Beckley, we got this. Go play with your airplanes at the airport, we'll let you know if we need anything.
Is there anyone else tonight here who would like to be heard on this ordinance?
I think there's a lot. You guys stand up, there's a lot.
And as you speak, we would ask you identify yourself and state whether or not you live in the city of Beckley, please.
Hi, my name is Leah White. I'm a 10th grader at Woodrow Wilson High School, and this is my fifth year running on the Beckley Straton Cross Country Course. I'm uniquely qualified to speak on this subject today. I've made countless memories running, and I've met some of the greatest people in West Virginia running on this course. I've had the opportunity to run all over West Virginia and in other states, and I can tell you from personal experience that our course is one of the toughest, yet the most beautiful courses in West Virginia. Each year, hundreds of athletes use this course to prove to themselves how tough they really are. I love our home course. Without it, I wouldn't be nearly as competitive with other athletes from around the state. I'm only halfway through my high school cross-country career, and I want to continue to improve and keep Beckley at the forefront of our sport. My younger sister is now following in my footsteps, a cross-country runner, and uses the course daily to train and work towards her own goals. I'm asking you to please allow future student athletes like my sister and me to make their own memories on this wonderful piece of land. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Timonran, the captain of Woodrow Wilson High School's girls' cross-country team. I am here to oppose the economic development on our cross-country course. I've been running cross-country for four years, and every year I find something new that I enjoy about it. Whether it be a new workout we do on our course, or the popsicles and laughters that we share afterwards, these moments on our course are irreplaceable. Without our course, we will not be running the times we are today. We've run the entirety of our course, forwards and backwards, up and down the hills. Every inch of it challenges us physically and mentally, making the Woodrow Wilson cross-country team into what we are today. At the start of our season, every year, hundreds of schools come here to race on our course. During our entire season, we run hundreds of miles on our course. Each year, our coach spends hundreds of hours mowing and patching the uneven parts of the course. This course is a part of us. Don't let this become a thing of the past. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maya Bunta, and I'm a cross-country runner at Woodrow Wilson, and I'm here to firmly oppose the development on our cross-country course. During the season, our team spends countless hours on our course. We are representatives of the city of champions, Beckley, West Virginia, and this is our home course. We have memories of personal bests, hard work, and laughter here, and it is a matter of extreme pride to me that I can start off my seasons racing here, at home, at Beckley, where over 400 runners came to race this year at our invitational. We don't just want this course, this is a part of our team and our community, and it's not only us that uses this. Our middle school runners at Park, like my little brother Yeshmeh, and Beckley Straton also use this on a daily basis. Our schoolchildren and our student athletes at Beckley Elementary and Beckley Straton Middle School come here to practice and learn and make their own memories. So I am speaking for the children that have yet to make memories here, which is something this development would directly halt. So do not let development be our priority over the children. I implore you to stand for our children, protect our course and their futures. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lilian Boswick, and I'm a cross-country runner at Woodrow Wilson High School. And I would just like to say that this course has such an impact on all the schools around us, for middle school, high school, and even college students. It's a place where people from all over the state can come and watch people do what they really love, and we really look forward to it every year. It's a great course to start the season, and every year we have such good turnouts to the meets held here. I see new schools from all over the state every year, and they really enjoy the course. I always hear good things about the course from parents, coaches, and runners. Just seeing this sport grow in popularity throughout my years of running leaves such a big impression on me. Knowing this course could disappear right in front of us is devastating. Our course is something I know me and my teammates cherish very deeply. It's a place we go to push ourselves and make memories. It's something we call our own. I would hate to see it gone, and I know it would deeply impact our runners, the coaches, and sports overall. Please don't let it disappear. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tim Murdock. I am totally blind. My daughter, sorry, she is a cross-country runner for Woodrow. And I'm going to use this phrase, her eyes, I'm running with her eyes. She comes home every day telling me what she accomplished, how everything is just coming to help her be a better person, to be a better student. I was a member of the 1987 AA, single A state championship in Shady. What I'm saying is, Coach Manning risked his soul, he invested in us, invested in us wrestlers. He made sure we went to class, he checked on our grades. I'll tell you some of the guys that I wrestled with, let's see here, there was Larry Ransome, a successful business owner today, Louis Lilly, a successful builder, he builds homes out there at Glade. Then we got Daryl Shuesbury, a doctor. And I'm pretty sure a lot of you guys know who Ben Slango is. He wrestled on that team. So we had a lot of great wrestlers, we had dedication. What I'm trying to say is, I think we should invest in the children first, first and foremost. I'm telling you right now, it makes me upset to think that we're going to have industrial stuff right next to the high school in the Beckley Straton. That just don't make no sense to me. I mean, I want my children to be safe. I want a safer place for all these childrens to go and run and have a great time, and taking that away from them is a disgrace.
Antonette Mizellaguen, Beckley Straton teacher, been there for about 20 years now, and I just cannot see this beautiful land that I look out of my window every single day. Matter of fact, I wish I could have brought a picture. I'm on the side that you can see the field, that they're wanting to put all of these structures on. I don't have the usual classroom. My chairs are facing my windows. They don't face my board. They face my windows so it's like an inspiration for the kids. And I'm a math teacher, I'm not an art teacher, I'm a math teacher. The very first day of school, I had the kids write down, as a little, just a little get-to-know activity, of things they liked about the classroom, or maybe didn't like about the classroom. I just left it open, just tell me something. Because if there's something they didn't like that bothered them, you know, I wanted to change it because I wanted it to be a good learning environment for them. I cannot tell you how many papers, I have about 110, 20 kids altogether, just on my team. How many of those kids, the things that they put, now, don't get me wrong, my room is decorated with horses and everything else, I have a lot of decorations, that put their favorite thing about my room is a view out the window. That's what they put on the paper. This was before any of this started. Matter of fact, we were one of the last people to find out about this, which is very sad because to us, when things happen like that, and they happen really fast, I don't know about you guys, but I think this is like trying to get something in under the radar, very quick, and that just is very sketchy to me. This is our land, this is our kids' land. It might not be legal on paper, but for 30 years, I have looked out that window, it started with cows in that pasture. That's how it started. And it would be a completely wooded lot, which is fine, woods are beautiful too, but it is a beautiful, nice, perfect place to build on, thanks to people who've been taking care of it for all these 30 years. But these are, this is our kids' land, our kids in the community. So when they build these businesses, these businesses are just to relocate businesses that are already here. They're just relocating them, and they're sticking them right beside our school. So when my kids go outside on the little bit of land that we would have left, or when they look out the windows, you know what they're going to see? Bricks and mortar, people on the backside, because it's going to be the backside of businesses, throwing the trash away, smoking the cigarettes, who knows what else? And no one in this room can promise that that's not going to be a safety issue. Not one single person can promise us that. And don't say, well, we'll build a wall. Are you really kidding me right now? Really? So, and you know, they've talked about, well, we'll leave you some green space, we'll leave this. Okay, that's all fine and dandy, but guess what? Our superintendent is interested in this land. She even knows how important it is. But the thing is, I don't understand why she found out kind of at the very end like us. This is our kids' land again, our kids who have used this, who have taken care of it. You're going to take it away to put some businesses so that this doctor office across the county can move over here now? Come on. This is ridiculous. Our land, your land, for your kids and the whole community. It's what's best for the city. It's the kids, guys, the kids.
I'm Elise Schreese-Berry, I'm a teacher at Beckley Straton Middle School. I'm also a runner. I came to it late in life, but a very wise person told me once, if you can run seven miles, you can run a marathon. And that stuck in me, and I've run four in many, many half marathons since, and I've trained on that course. And when we started this fight, or at least wanting to bring attention to what we felt was an instance of people in leadership not being transparent with the people that really be affected by the decision, then I told my kids about it, and they encouraged me, my students, we need to fight for this, Miss Schreese-Berry, we want this, we want this to stay the cross-country course. Well, then, my attention got diverted a little bit because in prioritizing and really thinking about, what am I fighting for? It was mainly the safety of our kids and not knowing what was behind us and being blocked in and not having an outlet. But then, you know, after I spoke with them, I realized and listened to what they wanted. Miss Schreese-Berry, we want to preserve this course, we run this course. This is the most beautiful course, it's the only one that you can see, all the runners, and I'm a cross-country parent too, and it's awful seeing the back of your kid, 30 seconds, then they're gone for an hour, and then you might see them, you know, maybe crossing the finish line. This is the only course that's unique, and you get to see them run. But back to my seven miles, and you can run a marathon. We had run the seven miles when we brought attention to this. I missed the last meeting because I was busy. Life gets you. And sometimes I think people in leadership count on you to be busy, so you don't take action, and you don't show up here and do what you need to do. So when my kids asked me the very next day, Miss Schreese-Berry, did you win? Did you do something? You know, what's happening with the land? They're curious, they want to know. I realized when talking to these very nice people about what could be done, relocating the course, putting a wall up, whatever, I realized what I was doing. I was crying at mile seven. And so here I am, changing my mind and standing in solidarity with our students and our teachers and our parents and our community members, saying that we need to run this thing, we need to finish this course, we need to run the marathon, not quit at mile seven, and I don't care if this land is expensive and is fits whatever, then why not give it to the kids? That's where we should be investing, in our children, they are our future. We're all going to be gone in 20, 30, 40 years, depending upon what happens, but they're going to be here, and they're the ones that have to live with our decisions.
I'm Coach George Rivera, and I just want to say how proud I am and inspired by the groundswell support from the community. I mean, as I look out and I see people talking about our cause, and especially bringing to light information that wasn't, you know, given to us before, you know, and that's kind of what this all started, was a little bit of transparency, is what many of y'all ran for who were recently elected, was transparency and change. And so now we have that, even more so today, thanks to the efforts of people that are doing a little digging. You know, not just are we wanting to preserve a cross-country course, but you've heard that tonight, that we're also wanting to preserve a safe school zone, just like they did in Shady Springs in 2223, when the former principal Nichols stood up and was in opposition of building industry across the street from Shady Springs Middle. He brought to light the hazards, the potential hazards that come with construction, whether it's noise and air quality, water quality, traffic, safety concerns. Any construction on that land can provide a safety concern for the students of that school, both schools. Besides the fact that going outside and breathing all that, when they start digging and moving soil and construction materials, there's a lot of hazards. There hasn't been any studies about that to, you know, let us know that, oh, this is going to be safe. So it's kind of reckless, in my opinion. But getting back to it, I mean, you know, the community's reaching out and speaking their minds on something and really coming together, and I think this is an amazing opportunity as a town to take a stand and do something great for the kids, and who knows where this can roll in a couple of years. But, you know, I think we've missed that a little bit here, and now we have it. But I am appreciative of all the attention, the time, my opportunity to speak, and you know, it's not me saying, it's a lot of people, and I'm just, I'm really grateful and inspired. So I hope you take that into consideration. And if you don't just give them, you know, put in a motion to donate the land to the school board, you might consider tabling it, because there's a lot of information that came out tonight, and I don't think we're ready for a final vote. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Paul Corbett Brown. I'm here to speak in opposition to transferring this property, and to do so, I want to talk to you about the three Cs. The first C is our children. Kids have only one opportunity to be a kid. They have only one time to be a child, and during that time is our opportunity to provide them with the foundation and the support they need to make their best foot forward and to become adults in their communities. Second C is civics, or it could be cynicism, that's your choice. Some of our kids are here, some of our children are here right now, and they're watching these proceedings. And as one of the teachers mentioned earlier, in the coming days and hours, the rest of the students and community, children in this community are going to find out what happened in this room tonight. So we're all on display, all of us, and what we do and say here tonight matters. You have the opportunity this evening to set an example of how civics works, or... You have the opportunity this evening to set an example of how civics works, or to continue the cynicism that pervades our communities right now, as regards to government and their relationship, or lack thereof, to us as citizens. Lastly, the third and final C is courage. The opposite of love is not hate. The opposite of love is fear. From this perspective, another word for love is courage. In fact, the roots of the word courage come from the Latin word "cor", which means heart. To take heart is to have courage. So, courage is not a lack of fear, but a willingness to face fears. I watched a recording of the last meeting with dismay, the fear-mongering that happened in this chamber of the people. It's not the first time it's happened. One thing I think we can all agree on is this. If a group of people, and in particular attorneys, have a will to do something, they will find a way. And so, I will say to this evening, respectfully, Mr. Fowle and other attorneys involved in this, if you don't have the ability or the willpower to stand for this community, and to fight for this community, then please step aside and allow us to have the opportunity for someone who can. Better yet-
Thirty seconds.
-let's find a way to resolve this by sitting and having conversations, not having a race to the bottom like it's been so far. Lastly, just one sentence. Kids only get one chance to be a kid. Let's find the courage to make that count. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is J.C. Wellman, proud resident of Beckley for almost 40 years now. I want to speak on the course itself. It's a unique course in the fact that the school sets that vantage point in which you can see the majority of the course, which is not something that most of the state has afforded. And so, in doing so, draws a large number of people to this race. My wife and I were in attendance to a race earlier this season, in which I would say thousands of people were attending, and which brought tens of thousands of dollars worth of revenue from outside of the city into it, in the form of restaurants, and stores, and gas stations. At the event itself, we had vendors, local vendors, set up, who, again, were benefited from the ability to have this race here. What the course also does is provides these children a place to safely nurture their hobbies and interests and activities. And in a state that's in the midst of a drug epidemic, I think, if at anything, we need to encourage extracurricular activities, as opposed to taking them away. In addition to that, we're also in a state with an obesity epidemic. I myself am a victim of that one. But it affords these kids the ability to get out, stay active, stay healthy, in a competitive manner. At these races, I've also seen, if any of you have been in attendance, you'll see kids collapsing from fatigue at the end of the races. It nurtures stick-to-it-iveness and determination that you will not see in many aspects of their day-to-day lives, but it is something that they will carry with them throughout their life, all at the, all at the advantages of the cross-country course. My understanding, there's 130 acres out there. I believe the cross-country course is roughly 30. To echo someone's sentiments earlier, if we could just table that 30 acres, I think you would see less distress from the community, and I think it would be more impactful for years to come. Not off the crystal ball, I can't see the future, but what I do see happening is this land being sold for, to a developmental company, in which it sits vacant for the next decade. Our kids can't play on it, and they're not doing anything on it.
Thirty seconds.
So, in order to impact the future of Beckley for the betterment of our children, I think it's most beneficial that we keep this cross-country course. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of council, mayor, citizens, Woodrow Wilson, teachers, coaches, after all that's been said, there's not much for me to say. But I am Tony Martin, a Beckley resident, and I want to stand here tonight and say that I stand with these teachers. I stand with these coaches. Anybody that knows me knows I never played sports. I jokingly say I do good to walk upright, okay? So, I'm talking to you from an economic development standpoint, just as I did before. The city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars surveying this land and getting it ready for production. These students and teachers have used their bare hands, and they've created something one-of-a-kind here in Beckley, West Virginia, with their bare hands, something they're proud of. Now, I know, I ran with, I ran for office with most of you guys. I know we all want to keep our young people here, and we wonder why they're leaving. Let's think about that question right there. When we got these kids who have used their bare hands, I'm gonna say it again, to build something one-of-a-kind, no other track course can you watch the whole course, this is what we've been hearing. So, if we're really about economic development, what I implore each of you to do is reconsider Councilwoman Hunter's amendment to set aside, we now know all the hubbub has been debunked. Let's set aside 30 acres. Show these kids that we stand with them, we respect them, and we want them to have a future here that they will remember for the rest of their lives. That's all I got to say, folks. Let's make it work for the kids. Invest in our children. They've invested in us. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay.
Hello, my name's Angela Mizella. I'm a Beckley Stratton teacher and coach for over 20 years. First off, I just want to say, we started a petition in less than 24 hours, we have almost 500 signatures on it. Now, what could we have done had we had more time? Like everybody has said, this has been fast-forward, fire under everybody, let's do this, let's do this, why now? We didn't even know about it, and I'm, the first meeting I came to, I know you all's faces were like, "Wait, this is that close to the school? You all weren't even aware of it." Well, how do you think we feel? I've been out there for over 20 years. Besides the course, the safety, one thing I was over there talking about is, have you all familiar with Alice, the Alice drills at all? Okay. All right. Unfortunately, because of the society we live in, now we have to be trained in how to evacuate the building, in case of things like shooters and emergency situations. Have you been out to Beckley Stratton recently to see how we are situated on that lot? Anybody? We share one gate with an elementary school. Between both of our schools, there's over 1,000 kids, teachers, staff. You know Gray Flats Road? Do you think you can get, how many cars, parents is that, coming in there with emergency vehicles? A bypass, four lanes, count the middle lane, that's five lanes, no stop sign. You know, we have buses going in and out there, traffic, and police, firemen, parents, Gray Flats Road, no stop sign, or no stoplights. I mean, nobody has thought about this. That's what happens when you fast-forward. That's what happens when you just go, 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 worry about it later. You watch the news? When do things change after stuff like that happens? Nope, not gonna happen. And if you all don't stand up against this, we're just gonna keep fighting it, because this is wrong. And another thing, we're not gonna be the bearers of bad news to our children. So, if this doesn't, if this happens, and they lose it, because what do you have to lose? Now, what do they have to lose? They have everything to lose. I don't want to talk about what else they could lose. I mean, it's safety, it's everything. It's not just sports, it's not just a cross-country course, it's everything. We are already landlocked, and you're gonna landlock us even more? I don't want you all to have to come in and tell our kids why you sold their land from underneath them, because we're not gonna tell them. Do you want to go tell them?
Thirty seconds.
I don't think so. Just think about what they have to lose, what they could lose. Don't put them in that situation to relocate some doctor's offices. Don't do that. It's not right. Stand up for what's right. What do you have to lose? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Christina Basden, and I definitely live in the city of Beckley. So, in my hand, I have the deed card, and I have the original deeds to this property. I'm going to cut to the Department of Agriculture deed, and I'm going to reference the page number two, after you turn the first page. You were all given a copy of this. It says, "The deed from the Agriculture Department to WVEDA shall contain a right to reentry on the conditions subsequent vested in the Agriculture Department or its successors and interest based exclusively on the condition that the property shall be used by WVEDA and its successors assigns and transfers in titles as a business, technological, and industrial park, or as the site for one or more educational facilities." We have, we have heard about covenants, and we must do this now, or else. We have proven time and time again that this council is being manipulated, and we've boldly challenged the integrity of the information being provided by the city attorney. Consistent half-trues and blatant lies to manipulate your decisions. Do not allow the 11th hour to persuade you and lead you away from our best interest, which is these children. We have too many people with agendas, AKA money. We talk about prevention. Let's stop talking about prevention. Let's do it. And I have one last thing to say. If the purchase of the Black Knight was important enough to sustain memories and nostalgia, then so is the track. Give the kids the darn track, and let them keep this legacy. This is our legacy.
My name is Charles Howke, and I'm the recently retired assistant golf coach at Woodrow Wilson High School. Anyone that knows me, I love children, I love children and athletics, and I want to commend you all in what you did coming up here. I'm proud of you all. Congratulations on great presentations, okay? The track, and I'm not a cross-country individual as far as knowledge, so I'm from the outside looking in. The track appears to be wonderfully located, what a beautiful piece of ground. It's just a wonderful, wonderful cross-country track. And what I bring is something a little different to the table. I bring, "Let's work together." And when you work together, there's some trust, and you can't say, "Absolutely, this is gonna be done, and this is gonna be done." But I'm a proponent of working together, okay? Now, this is such a wonderful, beautiful parcel, the 30 acres. However, it's such a wonderful parcel for economic development as well. And Pinecrest sells property for $75,000 an acre, and I know our children, we don't let money overtake our children's needs, but the parcel, sell them for $75,000 an acre, and say out of the 30 acres, 20 are developable, that's a million and a half dollars. Now, the county commission wants this. Greg Duckworth, the president of county commission, wants this. They have money to put into it. Now, they said they will put money into this. Now, a couple of things. You all, I have trust in the county, and I don't think the county is gonna leave this program and this complex, you all's complex, without relocating you in something that hopefully is as good, or maybe even better. Now, there's some trust there. I can't speak for the county, I have no reason to speak for the county. Now, on Gina Belcher, and she was talking about what could be done with access to the property, and Gina Belcher's head of economic development for New River Gorge, but part of Pinecrest would put an emergency exit, part of the Pinecrest development of that 30 acres has an emergency exit from Woodrow out, I'm sorry, not from Woodrow, from the two schools, out to the fore lane-
Thirty seconds.
-which makes it even better for Woodrow, if that is done, and that's a proposal to be done, and then the parking, increase parking for these schools. Gina Belcher's already talked to Beaver Coal to get additional property to expand the parking for the two schools. So, and Beaver Coal's property really doesn't have a lot of economic value, that probably could be done. So, all I am, and if anybody knows me, I love, I love the kids, okay? But I'm a proponent of, "Let's try to work together, there's gotta be trust." And can we put trust in Greg Duckworth, president of the county commission? Can we put trust in Raleigh County to relocate this deserving team and school with another, another course, which could be equally good? We don't know, but hopefully so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howke.
Does anyone else wish to be heard tonight on this ordinance? This is the final chance.
Don't relocate. The kids deserve what they have, and they deserve the best.
Thank you all for the comments. At this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and turn it back over to the mayor. Mayor, this is second reading, so, as I stated, the first reading occurred two weeks ago.
With that, may I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
May, mayor?
Yes, yes.
Go on, Frank, I'm sorry, go on.
Do we have opportunity to speak? After a second. Okay, go ahead. So, again, may I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented? Hello? Okay. Next item on the agenda is old business. Any council member have any old business? So, if none, then we'll move on to new business. Anyone have any new business? Anne, is there something you want to talk about?
I would just like to say, in your materials, I have listed what I've been up to in September, so to catch you all up on my duties. And I would ask the department heads if anybody has anything they need to report. I know chilly night's coming up. Jill, you have anything you want to mention about that? It's Beckley's biggest event, it's a lot of fun.
October the 5th, got a lot of great entries. Thanks so much to the community, I've been checking off the list of all the things to do to get ready for it, and it's, it's a team effort. Everybody in the city departments, they all help make it happen, and we're just grateful for the community for coming out. Also, I want to mention, just so you know, and with traffic and everything, that next Wednesday, October the 2nd, will be Woodrow Wilson's Homecoming Parade downtown. They will be lining up at Park, and a big, excuse me, at 4:30, and the parade's at 6:30. The other thing we just put out there was, we're gonna have the scarecrow contest again at the end of October. For the homecoming parade? October the 2nd. Well, wait a minute, make sure I got, that is the 2nd, right? Yep, Wednesday, the 2nd.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Leslie?
Our very own Shane Pierce from The Theater is gonna have the premiere of his movie.
Ambrosia.
Ambrosia. It was filmed at what is now just-for-kids, right? It used to be the Ambrosia Inn. It premieres Friday night. I believe the tickets are sold out, but they've added a second night, so that anybody wants to come, please support this local film group that's been working very hard on this, and we're very proud of Shane and what he's done. And then, we have a new exhibit at the Youth Museum, it's called How People Make Things. It's on loan from the Pittsburgh Children's Museum, and it's modeled after Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood, so we invite everybody to come down. Okay.
Anyone else? Well, I'd like to take this time too, to thank the department heads for working with me this past month. I can't say enough nice things about the department heads and their staff. These are people that really care about the city, and really care about its citizens, and are really helping to strive to move the city forward, and to do the best they can for our citizens. So, thank you, department heads. So, thank you, department heads.
All right, next up is public comments. Just want to remind everybody that signed up to speak, that you come up and state your name and your address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And, you know, just make sure your comments don't include vulgar or discriminatory language. So, with that, we'll bring up you know who first, Mary West. Come on up.
The heat's in every one, once again. And I want to thank all of you all for coming and putting the word out for our children. Because I got grandchildren that go to these schools, and they got some awfully long legs, so they need to put them legs somewhere. And we got enough places to sleep and eat already, so I don't know why y'all trying to put some more sleep and eating places out there. Now, another thing, you all need to consider changing the ordinance of the city of Beckley to include nuisance trees. You know, I've been fussing about the alleyways, but there's other nuisance trees that people have on their property. And I can't drink all the water that I just lost on my property because of a nuisance tree wrapping itself around the water lines. Include that, that people would have to take these trees down and not put them close enough for the roots to run over to the next person's property. And another thing, consider putting the speed bumps out on my street, please. Because that thing that's down there is not helping. The only thing helps is me in the window with a siren blowing, and I'm going to go down the road. And that don't help us so much. So, if you all can put some speed bumps or put some cameras, you're talking about how much money you need, put some cameras up there and hit them in the pockets as they flying down La Rue Avenue. So, please consider keeping things, I mean, don't take away the good things from our city of Beckley, like the place children needs to play, and keeping all this old garbage that are here that is not worth a dime to none of us. And I thank you, new administration, because you all are a heck of a lot better than that old one did. And do better, please, and I thank you all. So, have a great night and be blessed.
Paul Brown? Okay, very good. Lillian Boswick? Oh, man, all right. Leah White? All right, great. Maya Panta, I guess you talked too, because you spoke last time.
Yeah, but I'd like to thank everyone in the community for coming up, or I really appreciate all of you guys.
Does anybody say?
Three minutes is never long enough. So, I'm going to say this one, well, a couple things. First, three minutes isn't long enough, and you are a new city administration. We're getting ready to have a new city manager come in, but it would be great for us to have a town hall, because so many of us have so many issues that are going on within our neighborhoods. It's just not long enough at a city council to express, you know, what we need or want to see within our communities. Second, I want to thank all of you for that decision that you made. Thank you so much. And I want to congratulate every parent, every teacher, and every adult that stood up for these kids and teaching them self-advocacy, because if you don't know self-advocacy, you'll be a doormat. So, congratulations to all of you. The last thing that I would like to say is, thank you, Councilwoman Shoemaker-Dinges, for bringing attention to Beaver Avenue and all of the greats. We no longer drop 10 inches whenever we're going down that road. It's been prepared, and whoever was responsible for that, as the department heads, thank you very much.
Ow, I thought maybe you knew who that was. I, I cannot read this person's writing, but they live on Lincoln Street? Who lives on Lincoln Street and signed up?
That was me. I spoke already.
Good deal. Charlie Howke, you want to speak one more time, or you? You know that's a yes.
I want to congratulate you all and commend you all once again on what you did well.
All right, next item on the agenda is discussion of city manager position, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Fow.
Okay, thank you, mayor. I think as most of you know, on the 14th of September, city council had a special session in which they then went into executive session to interview four applicants, four finalists for this position. They spent most of Saturday doing so. I think it was a very, very positive day. We had four excellent candidates. I think any of the four would make a very, very fine city managers. So, what we are going to ask tonight is to go back into executive session. This is the first time we've been together since then. We have not had a chance to discuss with council any terms, financial terms, contract. So, tonight, we're going to have our first discussion in executive session regarding terms for a potential contract. So, that's, I just want to state, that's where we are. There'll be no decisions made tonight, but there will be a discussion, and then there'll be a follow-up meeting. It could be one in a couple of days, or it may be next week. We're not sure. It depends certainly on the individual, but I think it was the consensus of this council that there was an individual that they all seemed to favor, so.
Mr. Fow, could I just intervene briefly?
Please do.
I want you all to know that you see a united council. We spent all that day Saturday. That was good for us. And I think that even if we disagree, we're going to move this city ahead, and we're going to do what's best for the city of Beckley.
And mayor, I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to make a comment. The tide has certainly changed since two weeks ago. It certainly has. You've all recalibrated, and you pivoted, and you are self-advocating, and you are our future. And it was a really difficult Tuesday evening for me when I didn't have any seconds for that motion. But things happen for a reason. Thank you for the information that came forward, that turned the tide. We want to be, we are here to govern with this community coming to us, not the leadership going to them. You come to us to govern. Councilwoman Coates, you are correct. We have now a unified front. I cannot tell you, I beg your pardon?
Can you call my husband and tell him I was correct?
Oh, tell your husband you were correct. I want to thank the students that took courage. That's not new for us to be in front of a microphone, that's what we do. But students, you have courage. Mr. Brown talked about courage. You may be the mayor someday, or the city manager someday. And yes, civics is very important. And I thank my councilors. We are all wanting to do the best for the city, and I'm appreciative for each and every one of you to help turn the tide. We've righted the ship, I believe. So, that's how I feel. And I feel like I just wanted to say that, and thank you. I'm very appreciative of councilors. Thank you.
I'd like to say something myself, because last time I voted for the property to be turned over, and I'm the type of person I like to think before, and then we sit back, relax, and think if you made the right decision, the wrong decision. But a lot of times, this is just my feelings, we come to council, and we handcuffed it by some of y'all, not everybody, telling us what we can and cannot do. And then we look at our lawyer, Mr. Fow, and he telling what, he see what the city, what we supposed to do according to what he read out of it. But it was good to see that, because that's what I was going to ask the mayor, because I was going to change my mind, and I had to put in my heart to do that. But we are a new council, and y'all have given us an opportunity to do so. We talk about what has been done, we can't live on it. We cleaning up some stuff, but all of us, if you got some stuff around our house, too, we need to clean it up. But just give us an opportunity to do so. And I'm glad that we, as council, came together because of y'all. Y'all, I mean, some of y'all out there, y'all going to be presidents, because y'all gave some inspiring stories on the reason why. And I ran cross-country for Woodrow 54 years ago. Oh, Lord.
Excuse me, 52 years ago. Don't make us older than we are.
I graduated 52.
Okay, okay. 54, okay.
See, but that's the reason why, we, we all, just give us a time, the opportunity to show what we can do. That's all I got to say.
Councilman Williams also said about cleaning up, and to end on a positive note, and even another positive note, oh my God. Is that we're going to have a household hazardous waste collection this coming Saturday. I have flyers for everybody, got used oil, all kinds of stuff. You bring the things for no charge. It's sponsored by Beckley Air Foundation, City of Beckley, Beckley Sancheer Board, Pine Creek Watershed, Sullow Waste Authority, County Commission, and Carter Family Foundation. And we'll be talking about it with Keith Thompson on the, on the radio Tuesday, Thursday morning at 9 o'clock. But I do have these flyers for everybody, if everybody wants a flyer. It'll be at the convention center, rain or shine, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., so another way to clean up your house, okay? At no charge.
Anyone else? Anybody else?
I just want to thank the students for coming and expressing their opinions of what has happened. This is what happens when we don't work together, and when stakeholders don't come to the table together to know who is discussing what. So, I appreciate you all, and just keep doing the good work. Thank you.
All right, with that, may I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So, may I move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no.
Mayor, let me ask, are you going to have a parking commission meeting tonight, or do you want to postpone that for, for the next?
How long do you anticipate the?
That'll take a few minutes. The parking commission meeting probably be. We could, yeah, we could, yeah, we could continue right now the executive session and just go ahead and do the parking commission meeting, and then finish that, then we'll go into executive session. Excuse me, there's going to be a parking commission meeting right now. It's going to be a very short meeting, and we're going to do this before we go into executive session, so if anybody wants to stay for the parking commission meeting, they're certainly entitled to, or if they want to leave, we'd ask you leave fairly quickly so that we can move forward.
Good to see you.
Oh, man, that was awesome, man. Good job, guys. Great job, great job, man. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you all for coming.
I parked back there by you today. I parked back there with you. I'm just hoping we don't go out there and leave it because it's back down to the hole. I'm backing up, man. I don't know if I trust this parking or not.
I'm not that familiar with it, since we are just now bringing this back, so I will turn it over to Mr. Fow for more explanation on this.
Right, this is a committee that we had in place several years ago. We haven't done it since, at least since COVID began. And it's a committee that's comprised of the seven members of city council, the mayor, and the recorder treasurer. That's who comprises this, according to the city ordinance that we have in, on the books. So, tonight, what needs to happen first is this committee needs to elect a chairman and a vice chairman. Those are the two officers, so if you call for somebody to make.
Any volunteers to chair?
Yeah, I spoke to Ms. Worley and Mr. Fow and the mayor. I'm, I'm interested in chairing this.
Very good.
I make a motion that could be really big. Remember, you volunteered.
Anyone opposed say no?
No.
Too bad, you lose. Congratulations, Cody. Any volunteers for co-chair?
I'll co-chair.
Thank you, Ken McCann.
Taking it up a notch.
The point, council member McCannum?
So, may I?
All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed say no? Very good.
I would point out, too, we have Stephon Smith here. Stephon, stand up. He is our parking.
He's going to speak.
Okay, and he is our parking person uptown, so didn't know if you all knew him. Thought I'd introduce him.
Thank you, Stephon. Thank you.
All right, so the only real item we have on the agenda today is discussion of potential city parking issues to be considered in future meetings. So, that's basically, we want to open up the floor to council members. Stephon, we definitely would love to hear from you, and, you know, what you would like to see. You're out there more than any of us day to day. If you'd like to give some suggestions, and just kind of get the ball rolling, so we can all work together in getting downtown's parking where it needs to be. Anybody like, would you like to lead off?
I can. I actually voted for you.
Okay, definitely. Okay, yes, sir. Okay, yeah, I know that's, from my understanding, is pretty good concern about meters. It seems like, can we, we can't really find parts. Is my understanding, are new ones, we're having to, like, rob Peter to pay Paul with them and stuff? Is that, is that understanding pretty correct?
Yes, sir, you're correct. They're pretty much obsolete, about 70 years old.
Okay.
The internal parts are rusted out. Sometimes when we taking them down, they fall apart, and you can't replace it with a new meter in. Inside that package I gave is two meter companies.
Okay.
Palm is one.
Okay.
They gave me a quote on new meters about two years ago. So, I called them this morning so that I can get an updated, what do you call it? And all numbers on both business cards are out of business.
Okay.
It's no longer in service.
Okay. Would you think that?
make it none that we don't park there.
Well, in the past, normally, when we have council meeting, the only people can park on that lot is council meeting members.
That's really, that's a public lot for, for people doing business in the city, or doing business at city hall. So actually, the public, if they get here first, they can park there.
Okay.
Now, nobody's supposed to park there if they're not doing business or here in city hall.
Okay, well.
Rose, did you want to say something?
Frank, that's, that's something that, that, that this committee can decide, if they feel that that should be, if there should be spaces for council, because obviously, members of council have to have places to, to park, so.
You're all on my handicap, so why you got handicap signs up?
How you know I'm not handicapped?
Because I have to look at how you walk.
I guess you don't know about my head.
I take time to time, we park over there, we park, I'm here, I don't know how to use that machine, I tried, it does take quarters, but I don't understand, I don't know how to use the machine, and I'd like to ask, why can't you just take the parking meters out along the roadway, and be a whole lot simpler for everybody? Thank you.
We did have part, free parking, didn't we, Bill, at one time?
We have, we have had free parking.
No, most of the people don't have parking meters, I mean, you know, we're better than them, come on.
Bill, do you know how long ago it was that we had free parking?
I don't. If you can't get the.
The real problem with free parking is that we have the big project that has to be maintained, we have elevators in there, we have all the electrical, so.
No, 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 the parking meters along the roadway.
But that, but that revenue goes toward covering all the, the bills that go with the parking garage.
But you have the parking, the spaces that you rent out, you've got the money from them.
It's still not enough, as it is, the city had to supplement two-hundred-and-eight-thousand dollars last year to, to fund that, so there's still not enough.
What about the?
It's monthly parking up to, up top, people monthly park during the day, and then eventually can do hours of parking.
Okay, what about, I have, hold on, hold on. What about making it a monthly parking at the top of the?
I think that between eleven-thirty to one-thirty is genius. Now that you have more restaurants trying to come uptown, what, what ways can you publicize that, so that more people know about this? I work uptown, I'm in Nineveh Village, I have no idea about eleven-thirty to one-thirty, but I think it's brilliant, bringing people uptown, what are the ways that we can publicize this?
Signage, definitely, and hit the press with it.
What about making monthly parking over there on the top of the parking lot, and have you got meters here?
Okay, this actually, really, we're not open for public comments right now, so I'm going to let them speak, because they have a question, and they're paying, and then we're going to adjourn.
On the left side of the street, on Neville Street and Main Street, most places fifteen-minute parking.
Yes, like right in front of your store, correct?
Yeah, and also on Main Street, we're, we're fish cafes.
Correct.
And there's just a few people looking for pizza labor to be going now, so now, from getting their pizza going, or whoever ends up getting it. The thing is, is for the restaurants to survive, and for people to feel comfortable to dine in, I think we could change the fifteen minutes to one hour, two hour. And also, some of our tenants on Main Street, they, they do like Botox, and that sort of thing, like facials or whatever, but they have fifteen-minute parking signs in front of their place, if they're, because it's part of their business, because the people come there, they're there for at least an hour, maybe a facial or whatever, they get done there.
Definitely.
And that would be more simplified, too, if everything was either metered, or if it was one-hour parking, or if you want to, you know, one hour, two hour, I guess people enough time to dine in, have a few drinks, it's not, people don't feel rushed, you know?
That's true.
Because we got this chance, two restaurants now come in, and all these people seem like they really know what they're doing, they're going to yield for one hour, and this might be viralized.
I definitely agree, and I think really, personally, the only place that needs like fifteen-minute parking in front of would be like the water company or someone who's running in, but, you know, somebody who's running in to pay, they'll come out, but that's definitely something we look into. Anyone else on council have any comments?
That's what we're talking about, simplifying.
Simplifying, yes.
So.
Okay, okay, I gotta, want to end it there, and we're going to meet on the fourth Tuesday after council, so at the second one, we won't have the parking commission, but after the fourth Tuesday meeting, we'll have a parking commission meeting, public's welcome to come, and we'll hopefully have a little bit on the agenda for next time, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
We're going to go back and answer all these, to have these.
Do you have a monthly question?